It is 5:30. So we'll call the meeting to order, so if we would please stand for our national anthem.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City licenses. As you can see, there are several, 13 as a matter of fact, that have applied for city licenses, and so you can see those that are there. Any questions or thoughts on any of those?
No.
Okay, then consent agenda is next. Comments or thoughts from?
I'd like to have item E and I move to items for commission action.
E and I. Okay, Gary?
That's perfect, thank you.
Alright, so then I would entertain a motion then, that we, on the consent agenda, we adopt items A, B, C, D, F, G, and H.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Now it's a good time, this is one of the better times we get to do, as commissioners, we're going to recognize employees and citizens with life-saving awards.
Mayor and Commissioners, it's my honor to start this out tonight. On August 26, 2017, at 9:19 a.m., a Saturday morning, our 911 center received a call from Allison Andrews, reporting her husband had collapsed and was not breathing and did not have a pulse. As Public Safety Director, I can tell you that we, Jerry, Sean, and I, work extremely hard every day to ensure our citizens have every opportunity at survival when faced with an emergency of any type. However, if you do our line of work for any time at all, you do realize there is a higher power that plays into every equation. The scene we are about to describe happens 1,000 times every day across the United States. Your chance of survival if nobody does anything other than call 911 is 12 percent. Your chance of survival if somebody calls and you start CPR is 46 percent. So, it is so vital that our citizens learn CPR and are willing to perform CPR when the need occurs.
Jerry?
Tonight I'm going to recognize Stephanie Groff. She's one of full six-time dispatchers employed by IPD in our PSAP, and she's been with the department since May of 2017. She's very early on in her career. On August 26 of 2017, at 9:19 in the morning, Dispatcher Groff received a frantic 911 call from Mrs. Andrews. The caller stated her husband had collapsed and was not breathing. Dispatcher Groff coached Mrs. Andrews using Priority Dispatch EMD procedures to initiate CPR and continue CPR until emergency personnel arrived and took over his care. Stephanie's skill in directing units to the scene and her use of EMD training had a direct part in the chain of survival, which ultimately led to successfully saving Mr. Andrews' life. This life-saving commendation is awarded by the City of Independence as a result of an act to save or preserve a human life that otherwise would have expired without immediate intervention.
I arrived on scene first, and Allison was doing CPR on James. As I walked in, she asked if she should stop CPR. I told her to continue while I got the AED ready. I applied the AED, had her step back, delivered a shock. There's still no pulse. At this time, the crew showed up. They hooked James up to an auto pulse, which is a mechanical CPR device that delivers almost perfect CPR. They also pushed medications, secured his airway, and within a few minutes, we had a pulse back. We then transferred, or transported him to NDER, and then later to Jane Phillips in Bartlesville.
Mayor, at this time, if you, Commissioners come forward, Jerry and Sean, we would like to recognize these people. First one we're going to call is Allison. Fred, if you could read what the certificate says?
Sure. It says, "On August 26, 2017, at approximately 09:19 hours, Allison Andrews placed a frantic call to 911 dispatcher stating her husband had collapsed and was not breathing. She was coached by IPD dispatcher Stephanie Groff in initiating CPR and continued CPR until emergency personnel arrived and took over care. These were key steps in the chain of survival and ultimately led to the successful saving of James Andrews' life. This life-saving commendation is awarded by the City of Independence as a result of an act to save or preserve a human life that otherwise would have expired without immediate intervention. This award is hereby presented to Allison Andrews."
Dispatcher Stephanie Groff?
On August 26, 2017, at approximately 09:19 hours, IPD dispatcher Groff received a frantic 911 phone call. The caller stated her husband had collapsed and was not breathing. The dispatcher Groff coached the caller using Priority Dispatch EMD procedures to initiate CPR and continue CPR until emergency personnel arrived and took over care. Your skill and use and training had a direct part in the chain of survival, which ultimately led to successfully saving a young man's life. This life-saving commendation is awarded by the City of Independence as a result of the act to serve and preserve, to save and preserve a human life that otherwise would have expired without immediate intervention. This award is presented to Stephanie Groff. Marcus Hamilton. On August 26, 2017, at approximately 9:19 hours, 09:19 hours, Independence Fire EMS were dispatched to report of a man down with no breathing or pulse. Upon arrival, basic life support and advanced life support were given, which resulted in the saving of a young man's life. This life-saving commendation is awarded by the City of Independence as a result of an act to save and preserve a human life that otherwise would have expired without immediate intervention. This award is presented to Marcus Hamilton.
The rest of these certificates say the same thing, so the mayor will just call them up and we'll present them.
Matt Kent.
Matt was the lead paramedic on duty this day.
Steve Fuller. Next is John Bowles. Jordan Drybret. Next, Sean Wallace. Mr. Andrews, I think, is here. Would you please stand so we can see? Now, isn't that a wonderful sight? That's a wonderful sight. Thank you very much. And we do have one more, so let me have that one. And it is for David Cowan.
Thank you, gentlemen. Allison, can you come up here? We're just going to get a big group picture.
Now that was fun. After that, I almost hate to have to conduct business, but we need to move forward here. So now we're ready for a public hearing. So I will, and the public hearing will be to consider adopting the North Penn Neighborhood Revitalization Plan or Plans and establishing the North Penn Neighborhood Revitalization Area. Therefore, I would call the hearing to order. Any comments from, I do think we have one. Lisa Richard? Mike, are you ready?
Yeah.
Is it on?
It's loose.
It's Mike's fault.
It was my fault. It's a mechanical thing. It won't work for me, so, thank you. And that won't run against my time?
No. No, 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 no.
Time's up.
No, 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 no.
Commissioners, members of the public, Manager Whitehead, Attorney Chubb, nice to see you all. I have two topics in regard to this and very little time, so I hope I can hurry through this without becoming difficult to understand. First, on the inter-local agreement. I feel that the termination clause of this agreement, the one that deals with the party's ability to withdraw from the agreement, is very cursory, that it doesn't have an endgame that really describes how it's going to reasonably allow for the thing to be terminated. So I had a suggestion for dealing with that. You really have two main parties and then some peripheral parties. The two main parties are the county and the city. So, and it's very unlikely that any party is actually ever going to want to withdraw, which is probably why there is so little attention given to this clause. This agreement shall expire, gives a date, and then it states that the parties agree that any party may terminate the agreement by giving 30 days' advance notice, and then if that occurs, that the agreement will simply terminate. It says the entire agreement will terminate, and that's it. It's very plain language. The whole thing goes away. So I suggest that you add the words "as" to that party. It's very unlikely that any party will do this, and if any party ever does, it certainly won't be the county or the city. If either of you decide to do it, you'll have lengthy discussions about it, and you'll work it out. But if one of the other peripheral parties wants to do it, this would cover it, and you would add those words after, "Any party may terminate this agreement," add the words "as" to that party, pick up with your existing language, "prior to blank 2027 by providing 30 days' advance notice." That's my suggestion. Again, I'm not your attorney. Attorney Chubb is here. It undoubtedly is something that simply slipped through the cracks, and I'm sure that he has people, you know, who work with him, and, you know, someone reviewed this, and I'm simply making a suggestion. I have to tell you, I'm very concerned about this clause, and I apologize. I know that you do have good legal counsel. I have utter faith in Attorney Chubb, and this is not legal agreement. I'm a citizen, legal advice. I'm a citizen of this city, and I'm making this suggestion as a citizen who cares about this document and the city and the agreements that it enters into. My second area of concern about this Neighborhood Revitalization Plan is that it still does not address a section of North Penn Avenue, south of Railroad Avenue. And I know that we have discussed this before when I came before you, and I remember the comment was made that the city's Central Business District would provide grants and loans for revitalization of properties within the Central Business District, and I was told that that did extend on North Penn Avenue up into the area of concern, which would be north of Locust Street on Penn. But I see from the zoning map that was provided in this latest packet, that the Central Business District does not in fact extend up into that area. And so if you look at your maps that were provided with your packet, you'll see that there is a strip going between Locust Street and up to Railroad Avenue that is excluded from your North Penn Neighborhood Revitalization Area, and is not a part of that revitalization area, which I find very odd, because it is directly right along Penn Avenue. And why it would not be a part of this revitalization plan seems very odd to me. It includes an absolutely wonderful line of old houses and beautiful old trees, specifically between Sycamore Street and West Ash Street. And I remember coming here as a child and seeing those old houses and those wonderful old trees and feeling like that was just one of the most beautiful things that I'd seen, you know, because it was, we didn't have a lot of old houses, well, they had torn down already in urban renewal in the city that I came from, and to have, you know, a concentration of that sort of thing, and I have to admit to a little bit of paranoia about why that has been left out, you know? Is there some secret scheme to leave that out, or is it just overlooked? So could somebody please address that and explain to me? And I would like to hear the rationale for that. And I'm hoping that it is rational, not arbitrary, not capricious, not, you know, that it makes sense, that it somehow relates to planning, that it, you know, is based in good governmental planning concepts, and that you've actually thought it through, and there's a reason for it, and it's not just an error. Is there a reason why that strip of Penn has been left out of your plan? Thank you very much.
This is a hearing.
I own one of the homes that Ms. Richards just referenced, and although I don't plan on taking any of the benefits that this plan has to offer, I too have wondered why that one row of houses along Penn Avenue has been omitted from this plan. Because to me, it would seem of any homes, you would want those to look the best they could as people drive by them on Highway 75. And I, quite frankly, I thought she had addressed this at a past meeting, and it had been resolved, and those homes were on that, you know, part of that plan, but now evidently they've been taken back out. I just would encourage the commission to, if possible, to add those back in, because it may help some of those people along there. It may entice them to do some remodels to their home. Thank you.
Okay. So can...
Can I make a clarification here? Are you talking about right here? Is this where you're talking about, on Penn Avenue, from the downtown to the railroad tracks? It's in the downtown district, according to our maps. Now, it's not in the North Penn one, because it butts up against that. So are you talking about right here, from the downtown up to, along Penn Avenue? Where? Show me on here.
I think it's...
Are you talking about right here? That's zoning. This is a zoning map. This is the revitalization district. That's different. Well, that is the C3 zoning district in yellow. This is the zoning overlay. This is the revitalization district. The green is the North Penn.
So you're telling me that the Central Business District is not contiguous with what?
It is. This is the downtown district here. It has all the downtown, and it has on the North Penn, right here.
The confusion's entitled, the Central Business District.
It's a zoning classification.
And the Central Business District Revitalization Plan. The Central Business District is short of that, and it's not included. But in the revitalization plan for Central Business, it does extend.
See, they are connected.
And it extends all the way to...
Right here. It's the purple. The purple is all the downtown district.
So it actually overlaps?
It doesn't overlap, but it joins it.
It fills in that missing...
So there's nothing missing here.
That's awesome.
It is included.
Great. Okay. Yay!
We do appreciate your comments, though. I agree with both of you. It's very important, we, I mean, that's the one place we want to make sure to encourage improvements right along the main streets.
And I thought we had talked about that in the past. I thought we, I mean, I thought we had discussed that.
Yeah.
When we do the revitalization plan, that that map is...
Yeah, it was in the packet.
Is included with each.
It was?
It was the last, yeah, I believe it was.
I don't think so.
Okay. Well, if it wasn't, I'm sorry, but, no, it is included. This is the map of all the revitalization districts on that side. We have some on the south side too, but that's the ones on the north side.
It's not in the...
I didn't get that one.
It's not in the packet.
It's not? Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, we show the North Penn. We show the North Penn, but we don't show how it fits together with the downtown district in the packet.
That's really beneficial to have the total overlay, that you can see them together.
Okay. And then the question, Jeff, about the...
Well, it's not hurt my feelings, because I didn't draft that. That's probably just a redoing one. How many cycles of this have we had?
We've had several in there.
And that's always...
They've all been identical until lately, when the county changed that other language we discussed previously.
You know, I don't think it's a big issue. There's always things you can do. It doesn't hurt to put that in there. It doesn't, I don't think it hurts to leave it out. The only party that if they want it out, that would really affect it, is that the county want it out, because they administer it, and that would be difficult, but, because it's...
So you're not...
It's whatever your comfort level is. I suppose, you know, I don't carry a statute book with me. I was trying to look on my phone to read the statute, and it's a little too small print, but I suppose if the school district, or ICC, or the other two parties wanted to withdraw just their portion of the tax levy, would not be repaid. And I think actually you could kind of construe it that way now, but what she suggests would make it clear that that's intent. So it doesn't hurt to put that in there. I don't think it necessarily hurts to leave it out, but...
So if we put it in there, then we got to go through the whole process with the county, school district?
This is the public hearing. After we do it here, it hasn't been presented to the others yet. So what you come out of here with is what will be presented to the county, the school district, and the college.
And their hearings.
Yeah.
And their, and the...
Right.
Do you think they would have any issue with it? Because we've had such a heck of a time getting this thing approved.
Well, I know. It's kind of like, this is the time everybody's taken to want to change things, and I think the county's done changing. You're entitled to change some too, if you want.
I just think it's important to get it done, and if you're not concerned about it.
There's always, you know, you can always make suggestions, and I don't think that one hurts, if you want to put it in. I don't think it hurts necessarily to keep it out.
Okay, then we can, I think the others are up for renewal in 2018, aren't they?
We have some others that are going, you're going to have to start working on quickly, yes.
So we could, if the modifications that we make to this one can be made automatically in the others and speed up ratification.
Yeah, the language will be the same.
Yeah. So, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to adding it, if it'll just add a little more clarity. if it'll just add a little more clarity to them.
Talking about paragraph three of the interlocal agreement about the one, two, three, four, sixth line after the word agreement, I think that's where she was talking about. Just put, insert, as to that party. If any party may terminate the agreement, as to that party. So if, you know, one of the other taxing entities didn't want their levy rebated, then they could pull out. And I don't think the statute requires 100% participation. It just, if everybody participates, it's a greater rebate, more incentive to take advantage of it.
To take advantage of the revitalization. Okay. All right. Other comments from the, then I would...
May I ask, I'm so far from...
Can you please come up to the podium so that... There you go.
Hey, I came in a minute late. So that proposed revitalization of North Penn goes all the way through Oak up to the end of the cemetery, basically?
Yeah, it covers Derry Creek.
That is correct.
But there is language to exclude the Derry Creek.
Okay.
Because we're coming back, so.
Chuck and Chip Lizard. Okay. All right. Other comments from the community? From the, okay. Then I will close the hearing. All right. It's up to us then to make a motion. Leonard, I think you may have already formulated a motion maybe to...
Yeah. I'd make a motion that we approve acceptance of the North Penn revitalization area with the modification as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded then that we approve the revitalization zone as presented with the modification that was presented during the hearing. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. We're ready to move forward then. Items for commission action. We'll take these numerically, or alphabetically. Item A is consider setting the date of November 21st, 2017 at 5:30 for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the structures at 424 South 18th. Sean?
Yes. Had the chance to visit a couple of times with the homeowner, most recently this morning. They live in Wichita, aren't able to be here today, but we've had some complaints about this property, condition of the outside and, as we can see, the porch. And then there's also a detached garage that is leaning significantly that they are going to take out as well. But it is staff's recommendation that we do set the date of November 21st for a public hearing to consider condemnation of this property.
Okay. Questions?
No.
No.
Pretty clear, I think. Before I entertain a motion then that we, I make a motion that we set November 21st, 2017 at 5:30 for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the structures located at 424 South 18th.
Second.
All those, any other comments? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Item B is consider reviewing the condition of 1001 North 18th Place and consider authorizing staff to set the date to receive bids for removal. Don?
This one I'm going to explain a little bit. There was a fire to this in a bedroom and there were insurance proceeds which had been reduced significantly because it was vacant at the time of the fire. So talking to the homeowner, she said she does not intend to repair it because she doesn't have enough funds and is desirous to have the structure taken out. And going through things today, and matter of fact, I put this on the agenda. That's why I am explaining this. Going through this, we have notified also the mortgage company, but we haven't received a response back from the mortgage company. And the more I thought about this...
We have.
We have.
We have. And the mortgage company said that there's nothing they intended to do.
Okay, then I...
We're okay.
Then we're okay. So I have talked to the homeowner. She wants to have it removed. It is staff's recommendation that we do, that we get authorization to set a date to receive bids for removal.
Okay. Kind of too bad because when you first look at it, it doesn't look like it's...
It doesn't look bad. It's just one that she has no interest repairing and unfortunately.
Okay. So then I would entertain a motion then to, or question from the commission?
No.
I'd entertain a motion then to set the date for removal.
I make a motion that we set the date for removal of 1001 North 18th Place.
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Item C is consider text amendments to the zoning code, specifically Article 8 relating to attention attracting devices and electric signs.
The Planning Commission met and had a public hearing about this and recommended this approval. This originally was initiated at the commission level for the Planning Commission to look at. The language has not really changed since you saw it before. It was reformatted a little bit by Jeff. So staff's recommendation is to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and adopt the ordinance.
Okay. Questions?
No.
No questions? Okay. I'd make a motion then that we adopt the ordinance implementing a text amendment to Section 803 dash, or Point 6 of the zoning code as recommended by the Planning Commission. Would you be a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item D...
Before we get to D, item E and I.
Want to do them first?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Just be quicker.
All right. Item E then is consider an agreement with PEC for professional services relating to AV upgrades in the veterans' room of Memorial Hall, which is this room. Question is?
We had a question on the item H, the scope of services, the built-in camera capability and capture streaming. Is the purpose of the cameras, they would be stationary to video the commission meeting? Or what are those, I guess, basically?
Do you want me to answer those or do you want to answer those?
Go ahead.
Yes, it would be used for the commissioners, commission meeting, but it could also be used for other functions. And there would be one stationary camera and the other cameras would have the ability to zoom in on...
I know the quality of recording the commission meeting, we're, you know, with Larry now, it gives us a better quality, that he can control the volume. So once we go stationary, the quality is going to...
There's a mixer, so you would still have the ability to control the volume. It would all be wired into our audio system and actually be controlled from the back of the room.
Now, if we're going to consider that, you know, I would prefer to see it as something separate. You know, just the quality of a recorded commission meeting where you've got somebody manipulating the camera focus in. It gives us a little better quality than to just go stationary.
Well, you would have that ability with all the cameras but one. The one camera would just be a, show the whole...
So somebody's going to operate the camera?
Exactly. We would need somebody at the back of the room to basically do the production similar now, but it would be with the cameras we have that then we'd be able to livestream from these cameras and they're all high-definition cameras. So you're going to get a good quality, plus we get a better projector and a better screen and it's part of the whole package.
Yeah, the other...
But the cameras, that's why we get high-definition cameras. And so, for example, we have one stationary, but the others could say if the mayor's talking, they can zoom right in on the mayor. So there will be somebody in the back there running the camera and making this production, if you will.
And the audio.
And the audio, yeah, sure.
Some are just set stationary and they're fixed and there's no one operating anything.
That's what we were honestly looking at originally, was two stationary cameras, one on the commission, one on the podium. And then we, PEC representative came down and Craig has had experience with this at previous places that he has worked where they have used these and he recommended adding the ones that you could pan and zoom and all of that. So those two cameras were added to give us that ability.
I guess that's where I got the idea that these are just going to be fixed cameras.
You're accurate. That was originally the thought, but now we've added two additional cameras that give us that ability.
Yeah, and that's the reason I asked it to be removed from the, for clarification.
Yeah, if we're spending $6,000 just for the design, what was the, what is the latest budget to actually implement the project?
We, in this fiscal year, we have budgeted $60,000 for the whole, for the whole package.
Six oh?
Yeah, six zero and three zeros behind it for the total AV, cameras, screen, projector, microphones. And we'll put that out to bid, but the, once we get the design.
It also changes the screen ratio to the 16:9 format. We have a lot of people come in here with presentations. The new computers are all the 16:9. And so sometimes that creates problems because the current office versions use the 16:9 format for PowerPoint.
It's hard to see some sometimes.
Yeah, the new one will be a laser projector and will be much brighter.
Yeah.
And you don't have to worry about bulbs.
Oh, okay.
Is this funded from the Memorial Hall fund?
It's, yeah.
Quality of life.
The quality of life fund.
Yeah.
Doesn't $60,000 for this one room seem like a gosh-awful lot, though?
Well, that's a budget number. It doesn't...
I know, so it could go even higher, but $60,000? That seems crazy to me.
Well, we'll, like I said, we'll put it out to competitive bid once it's designed. And if we have to, I mean, you could cut back the number of cameras if you wanted to, a little less in the production. You wouldn't get quite the coverage as well. That's why we went to four. Some rooms have five cameras or even more, but we thought four would provide the good coverage in order to get the one-on-one shots sometime and the podium and speakers and so forth. Refresh my memory, everything that's included, projector and everything. It'll include new microphones, wireless, and a different type of display for the commission. Again, the control equipment back there is quite expensive as well, but the cameras are expensive by themselves.
I understand, yeah.
So it adds up pretty quickly.
Sure.
And like I say, in the previous community, we spent more than that on the whole system.
I know, we could spend a lot more than that.
Yeah, you could.
We could spend nothing too.
And that's why I say we, you don't have to, certainly. We have a budget. It was in the budget. And it's part of, if you want to be, you know, look at it this way, we're increasing our transparency by we're going to be able to livestream this. So it'll be going out, just like a TV show, live. And of course, it will still be recorded and archived.
Right.
As well, but you will livestream it and make that available.
Yeah. I appreciate, that's a significant benefit. People can watch the meeting live, but I'm having trouble saying that's worth $60,000 to me.
Well, it doesn't hurt to bid it to find out what it costs.
Yeah, but we're going to spend $6,000 just to have the design done. And then, I mean, so I don't want to spend $6,000 to have somebody lay out a design and then decide not to do it.
Well, the design will incorporate, because we talked about that. We talked about it with the consultant. So whether we have three cameras or four cameras, that the switching equipment will be the same. In fact, that could go up probably, I think, six cameras total. So we talked about options and alternates if we had to reduce the cost. And that was, one of the biggest one right there was reducing the cameras from four to three.
But, you know, we're looking at a investment with City Hall, doing something with that, the 3 million water treatment plant, quality of life, could pay for repairs at the pool. So, you know, we're getting some significant age on the pool, the library repairs. Is it, do we need, do we need to do the full upgrade or do we need to do the upgrade now? Is it an actual necessity? It'd be nice, but our microphones are working.
One thing I would say, we definitely need to get a new projector. That's not going to last much longer just from that standpoint. But if you want to, I mean, if you want to scrap the whole thing and just, we can just get the projector and the new, we'd need a new screen as well, as Kelly mentioned, and some other minor things. I mean, that's up to you. Certainly, we're recommending a good, a good system that is transmutable to another facility. Once we, if we should ever leave this room, it can be moved as well. So it's not something that would be obsolete once we move. But we definitely do need some upgrades on some, a couple of pieces of equipment.
Well, I'm going to vote no on this one. I, you know, to me, I've bought projectors recently and a projector costs less than what we're paying for the design here. And so I just feel like we've got so much other, so many other things we need that are so pressing. I can't see spending $60,000 myself, although if you gentlemen are good with it, I'm, I'm behind you.
Yeah, I'd rather look at our more important items in the budget than $60,000 on this.
Okay. Well, I mean, it can, you know, we talked about livestreaming these meetings for a long time. This was the opportunity, so we're, I mean, what we're saying is, is that that's not important. And if that's what we're saying, then...
What I'm saying is it's not worth $60,000 to me, but...
But you're going to pay for it, good, bad, or other. Whether or not you want to, if you're going to ever livestream, it's going to cost you more later than it will now.
Okay, fair enough.
That's just like putting it off. I mean, it's just like anything else that we put off. If that's, I mean, if that's what we want to do, we don't even have to make a motion to approve it. It can just drop for lack of, for lack of motion. So, I mean, that's, that's up to us. That's what we're to decide.
Well, you know, if, if we're considering not keeping commission meetings here, then that would be even more reason to put this off.
Well, I don't know. I don't know. That's the first time I'd ever heard that commission meetings would not be held here.
I think the plans in the remodeling concepts have all shown a commission meeting elsewhere. And that's to be defined too. You know, this works good for commission meetings.
Well, as I said, it can drop for lack of a motion, so. All right, we're ready for item I then. Okay? Consider a contract with Trans Systems for engineering services for the three-lane improvement ending on Peter Pan Road from the geometric road improvement ending point.
On, on this item, at the league conference, one of the seminars was from K-Dog and they listed all the funding programs that were available. One of the items related to this was Economic Development Fund for street and road improvements. And one of the requirements for the road to be considered was you had to have a business definitely coming that would increase or affect the economic condition and development of the city, which the portion of road we're looking at with the location, the ER, the clinic, the infusion center, and future hospital does impact our economic situation in the town. So this portion, instead of us funding three parts, all of it, it would be available for funding under this economic development program. And in... And, and I sent Kelly some information and I do have some copies to kind of highlight the program. But it, it says that up to, well, a twenty-five percent minimum local match is preferred, although this is negotiable. It's, you can apply for the, the fund. The first slide shows the various funds and their application schedule. This fund can be applied for throughout the year. It goes through an approval process. We'd have to submit an application with data to the, the secretary of KDOT for their review and acceptance, then funding would be given. I visited with Mike Moriori with KDOT. He visited with the secretary of KDOT and said they are interested or willing to look at an application for this portion. The slide, the next one, Kelly, of the road. With this, we could apply for a full length. Instead of doing the reduced section we talked about, we could apply for the full-length improvement at the five hundred forty-two thousand dollars. We can justify the extension because of providing the safety with the turning lane from vehicles coming from the north, particularly the ambulance turning in to the emergency room. I visited again with Mike this afternoon after talking to Craig, wondering about, for sure, that since it's built, if it's applicable, and also the funding period. He said there's not a problem since it's built, and I talked to him about funding. And he said they would review it and look at trying to get it tagged on as a change order to our geometric project. So.
So even though it's finished, it would be a finished product here?
Yeah.
They would go ahead and.
Yeah, that was kind of a key question I had, and Leonard and I talked about, since the building's already built, it's not an imminent project that's there. And we have to then show what was the net increase in jobs. We have, that's economic development, it's tied to jobs. And the second thing is, could we do it by change order and not have to bid a new project? And it sounds like they're amenable to that process, because we certainly want to move ahead with that process of a change order and not try to bid it out separately.
Right.
Separate contract.
Yeah. And so we. Mike mentioned that they would prefer this because he's saying we would only deal with one road closing now. That if we had to come as a separate project to bid, then we'd have to close the pro, the road down and start back in. And the, and the cost would increase. But, you know, I got pretty excited when I heard the presentation, because if, if our participation is twenty-five percent, it cuts down our contribution for more than what we were talking about, the full length, down to about forty-eight thousand dollars instead of a hundred and fifty. So.
Well, how quick is that process? I mean, would they, because you, I mean, the way it is now, they'll go to a certain point and then stop. And so then.
Yeah.
I mean, to be able to extend it, then that, that approval process would have to be like yesterday.
This is going direct to the secretary and Mike said they didn't want us go to two closures. So they were going to look at it immediately and try and get us a response. And that's what, why I wanted to bring it on tonight to discuss with this change, because it'll affect some of the, the work working for the change order, but then also to turn around and get the application made. Labatt Health already has got a economic, economic impact statement with jobs and dollars. We had the, the road count. I think we're looking, total vehicles was around thirteen to fourteen thousand vehicles a day. So we've got the design, we got the cost estimate. So we're really looking at, at just making the application if, you know, we choose to go this route. And of course, the full plan would be much better. One thing that, I was talking to Kelly, do you want to show the map? As we look at, at this section of Peter Pan Road in relationship to developing the industrial park, it's over in the, on the, our left margin.
Yeah, on the side.
Peter Pan Road goes on up with the economic development money. If we market effective the industrial park, we could give more funds to extend it north and provide another entrance into the industrial park from Peter Pan Road. There's a, an easement to take another entrance into the industrial park off of Oak Street. So, you know, there's a lot of potential in the area. It's not just, we can extend and look at, at this as the end, but it could be funding source to go on and at least take it to Oak Street, which would, would improve the, the safety and the traffic flow from the soccer fields.
So is, is that north of there? Is that in city? Is that in the city limits? You know, if you extend it north like Leonard's suggesting, is that in the city? Is that our road is the question?
You mean on Peter Pan Road?
Yes.
Peter Pan Road, no, is not currently. Not past the back of Worshlands.
Okay. It'd be the same condition we had with our extension. We'd have to work with the county of how that transfers over. And IAP owns.
Basically, right here is where it's in.
Yeah.
Limits stop on Peter Pan.
So you have to do the engineering and do the plan work, don't you, Sean?
Yeah, the, the issue that I see is trying to keep it all as a change order, because we have a really good bid price right now. So it's, we're a little bit in a catch-twenty-two that we really need to get started on the design regardless, because contractors are going to be done and planning to be done in three months. So we're, we need to get started on the, enough design to get that change order finalized right now, really, because we have some property issues we need to deal with and some other things. So what, what I talked to Commissioner Fish about was with that, if we just did the amendment for the design services now, we can go ahead and survey the entire area and, and work on that. It's, if it stays a change order, it's not that big a deal on the design fee. We'd probably ask for more money on the inspection side, but if, if the commission wanted to just approve the design part of the amendment, then I think it would put the city in the best position where regardless if we get the economic development grant or not, you're still, you can still move forward and take advantage of the, of a change order, either totally with the hundred and fifty from each party, or it just does get reduced by an economic development grant. If it goes, if we have to go and rebid it all, then that process with KDOT is, you know what it's like. It takes a year, takes a year to do that. So, so that, then the city would have to decide if you wanted to proceed with that.
So, you know, I think we should look at extending the, the design to the full length and then also authorize the application be submitted as soon as possible for.
Sean, you'll, you'll submit the application or how's that? Do we have to do that? How's that work?
Yeah, it doesn't take too much to get that process going. It's just a couple of sheets. And then they'll make a site visit at some point, and that's when the city needs to game plan on how, how to deal with, how to best pursue the grant.
Looks like a fabulous opportunity. It, it's a little unclear to me. It says the project's approval must be critical to recruit a new business. We certainly can't claim that. The business is already there. But you said you spoke to them specifically about this project, that it's already built, open for business.
Right, because.
They might approve it anyway.
Because it is a new business that's here, that came. You know, it, they're aware of that and.
So all we're risking is the cost of.
The, the design.
Right, the design and any time that would be involved in submitting the application. I think in the past, the commission has had to approve the submission of an application. So that's why, you know, I wanted to discuss it tonight, that if we want to, we can get that done and get it going.
The, the design you'll do anyway. I mean, whether you stick with the current change order plan or if you go to the economic development. The only reason the design would increase is if we have to bid that project out as a separate project. And like I said, the inspection, we, if it gets extended a little bit, we'd probably ask for more money on inspections. So you don't, and we don't need that tonight anyway. You don't need to approve that tonight.
And that's covered, though, in the five hundred forty-two thousand.
Correct, correct.
So it says selected as annually as funding as available. Did he, I mean, is there, because the state is broke.
Well, that's what I asked, if we had to wait to two thousand nineteen or eighteen to get in the funding line. And that's when Mike said, well, we don't want to have you close the road twice. So we would look at it and it, I got the impression, he didn't say we'll get the money. But he was strongly indicating to turn, you know, there was a positive response to turn in the application.
Don't assume that you can't get it, basically. So we're not risking much and the potential reward is tremendous.
Tremendous. Because it will be concrete and not asphalt.
So, yeah, I mean, we should move forward with the application, obviously, and we'll pull together that data as soon as possible. It sounds like, though, we don't need to have all that data right now. We just, like you said, submit a couple, couple of forms and, and then get the data, the backup data later. Is that, do I understand that right?
Yeah, I think what they'll want to see initially is the concept and cost estimate we've done. And then I think there's, there's typically just a one or two-page form initially for KDOT. And then I understand on the economic development, they'll, they'll want some type of information from the hospital that's, you know, has been recently built. But I'm unfamiliar with what that exactly is.
And I did call Brian and ask him if he had it and if he would send it, and I've got that in PDF. So we can submit it with the application just to make sure we're getting as fast as we can all the information to them. You know, I saw the urgency that we're under construction, that we need a decision. And, you know, if, it needs to be hand-delivered, I'll drive to Topeka and meet with Mike and.
And me, too.
Take him some cupcakes and. You get serious when you take cupcakes.
So I guess you need, obviously, we want to approve the contract amendment to get that going as well. But then, if, do we need then commission action to submit the grant? So I guess that'd be the second motion or part of the motion.
So it'd actually be two, two motions?
Yeah, or you could do it as one.
You can authorize mayor to sign the contract during the Trans Systems and.
Submit.
Authorize staff to submit an application to KDOT for the economic development grant. So you got that written down? I can write that down. Okay, so.
You want to make that? I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the presented agreement with Trans Systems and also submit a grant application for the full-length extension of Peter Pan Road to KDOT for funding under Economic Development Funds Program.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussions then? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. All right, so then we're ready for item D, which is consider water sewer rate study and recommend, the recommendation for rate increases. Am I going to do that?
As soon as Mike gets finished writing down that motion. He's going to present, just a quick background, I'm, I'm sure you're all aware, of course, that before I came here, you had a water rate study done by a consulting firm that was less than clear. There was some confusion there. You directed Mike to go back. He'd been working with Terry Lieberger, the utilities director, and coming up with the rate structure. When we presented the budget in July, we went over the water rates. At that time, we didn't have the actual rates specifically. They hadn't finished their work coming up with that. But we did indicate, you know, what the range we were talking about as far as increases, and it was well over a hundred percent. Since that time, Mike and Terry, they've been working very hard diligently getting down this rate structure that you see, which, which brings it down, if you will, to a hundred percent. So it started out at a hundred, a hundred and seventy percent, if you recall, from the original study. But we think we bring this down with the first year at a hundred percent and then smaller, very small increases over the next five-year period, four years after that. So I'll turn it over to Mike now. We'll go through the, through the analysis and updating those rates.
Okay. Now, as, as we talked at, at the time that we presented the budget, you know, we, we knew that, that with the water rate study that had been previously presented, that this has not been a fun process. But what we really wanted to capitalize on was making sure that we got the adequate funds through that rate structure to, to bring the, the department from both the water and the sewer side back up to positive balances, not only today, but going forwards. And also provide us the ability to do infrastructure work and support that, whether it's through loans or through cash, cash contributions that, or cash reserves. But we also needed to be very mindful of the citizens, whether it's private citizens or if it's our commercial and industrial citizens, of how these rates were going to impact them. So we wanted, we looked thoroughly through these and, and minimized them to the best that we could. So although this isn't an ideal situation, it is a necessary situation. So we'll begin just looking at a few of the variables and assumptions that were made through the process of developing, developing this rate analysis. Both the water and the sewer expenses, of course, we're looking at a five-year period. There's a lot of unknown sitting out there, but we know that there's going to be some level of growth there on the expenditure side. And, and we put the, that in in our projections and forecast at two percent annually. The capital that you're seeing in here is based on five years of the CIP that, that we have presented to you through the budget process. So you're, you're seeing the things that are included in that. Keep in mind, as you look at the capital piece as it's presented, that does not include the three point one million dollars collectively for the whole project, for the water treatment and also on the sewer side. It includes the loans and the loan repayment, but it doesn't include that project cost, because there, again, that'll be funded through loans. Okay, so with that, these variables and assumptions were used then to create the proposed rates that we're going to discuss tonight. Beginning with the water rate increase at a hundred percent for two thousand and eighteen, we would see a, a smaller increase in two thousand and nineteen of six and a half percent and then three percent annually thereafter. On the sewer side of things, it would be a sixteen and a half percent increase in two thousand and eighteen and then moving to a three percent annual increase thereafter for that five-year period. This next slide, it illustrates what the rates would look like. Two thousand and seventeen, that's where we're at right now. That's what's being paid. You can see the rate structure. Of course, we have the base rate. That takes care of the first thousand gallons. The second line that says ten thousand, that includes per, per gallon from one thousand and one to ten thousand, sixty thousand. And then going on up. Primarily all of just the citizens from a residential standpoint primarily are, are in that ten thousand dollar range.
Ten thousand gallons.
Yeah, I'm sorry, ten thousand gallons. My apologies. My apologies, I think I did that the other day.
How many industries do we have that are in the upper ranges of sixty thousand?
You know, we, we looked and, and we, Craig and I, he, we talked and we went and pulled out the top twenty consumption users. We expanded that out to forty to, to get a good look. We, we do want to go discuss that with them, because they're, they're going to be feeling a big increase there. Everybody is, but at, as a total consumption, they're going to feel that. So helping them understand that as they go into their budget season, so they can prepare for it. So we've identified forty, and of that, much of it is governmental. So that's why we expanded it out to forty.
Are they in the sixty thousand, the five hundred sixty thousand, the one million?
We, we've got them going all the way up to the one point three.
We do have.
Well, no, I take that back, I think, I think there's one or two over the five sixty, I don't think anybody gets all the way up to one point three. I, I'd have to go back and look at that report.
So there's probably no more than five in the five sixty range and the other thirty-five are in the sixty.
Probably be about right. Leonard, I, I can pull that report tomorrow and shoot that out to you on that. I didn't bring it with me, did you by any chance?
It's just a spreadsheet or a printout from, from the, the computer. And so we, we looked at those tops, because we, if we saw any one that were going to have huge dollar increases, we wanted to try to reach them ahead of time and just talk to them. And we still may do that with someone, but like Mike said, the, the top one was, I think the sewer district, wasn't it?
Yeah, no, it wasn't the sewer district, it was a water district.
Water district.
Rural water district was the top one.
But for example, a, a business like Textron Aviation, they were about tenth or eleventh or twelfth. They were well down the list, I thought they'd be higher. Remember anybody that was significantly, and they were about in the middle of the pack, about eight hundred.
Yeah, the school districts, college.
School district, there were two or three different school district.
Motels.
College was the highest, there were.
Yeah, ICC, there were two ICC accounts.
There was three actually, ICC accounts. Yeah, well, the dormitories and then the campus. Yes, the motels were in that group, Hackney was in that group, Standard Motors was in that group. So we've identified those pieces of it, you know, from a residential standpoint. Once we understand exactly what we're going to do, we're, we're not only going to make this available online, but we'll also put something within the statements to let everybody know that they're coming. And, and we can get to some other slides, it's in the presentation there that kind of shows whatever population that you live in from a, a consumption standpoint, what your average monthly bill would look like year to year to year with the increases, and we also broke that down on the sewer side as well.
Mike, when we last talked to the engineering firm that's going to be doing the work at the water plant.
Yeah, PEC.
I think I remember them saying, we're not sure what we're going to find. We're going to have to do some core samples, because some of that was built by the WPA during the Great Depression. We just don't know what we're going to find. So how solid are we really on these budget figures for the renovations? Seems to me like we start a lot of question marks.
I, I think that there is, that they have not started. Terry, they, they haven't started on the drainage on that, have they?
No.
So the three million dollar number we keep throwing around, how, how confident are we?
It, it could potentially go up. And then, in that case, then we would have to adjust what we go to KDHE with from, from that standpoint.
Could go down too, we just, there's a lot of question marks.
You know, right now, we're, we're going after an approval of three point million dollars.
Right.
Three point one million dollars. The necessity came up that that needed the increase to cover that. We're, we're hoping that that doesn't happen, but, you know, we can't keep dragging this out. We have to have everything put in place, because without some sort of change in the structure, you know, KDHE's not even going to consider these applications. We have to take care of our end of it first, making sure that we're charging proper rates.
I don't think anybody would argue we need some renovations at the water plant and we need them badly.
Well, the, the big bulk of this first part was, for lack of a term, phase one, was like the electric, was the electrical part of it, right? And then the contract.
Terry, come on up here, I'm going to let him talk about this.
Contract with PEC was, that, I think you call it a clear water basin, was to evaluate.
Wells, clarifiers.
Clear water well, whatever.
The first part of it is, is electrical and that's, we have pretty good numbers on what's going to happen there. I don't think we'll have any surprises. The, the surprises could come in the condition of the basins, concrete conditions. And we will drain those and start in examining those next month. We had to put it off because the clarifier people couldn't get somebody down here until in October. So we'll know in a couple of weeks, well, probably three weeks, what we're looking at condition wise on the concrete and start formulating a plan as, as to where that's going to go.
And there are some, say, intermediate steps that could take place. Instead of total replacement, you could put a liner.
There's, yes, there's several different ways to address those, a liner is, is one option.
So that would get us where we could pay down or get some of the expense down to be able to afford a more expensive one.
With liners now is, is force appear in what it was just a few years ago. That, that's definitely an option.
So there's a chance we can bring it in under three million?
What is that possibility?
That's all I'm asking for.
Answer your questions, Alan, that, or do you have something else on that, Leonard, as far as the, the project itself goes on that?
Not on, on that, it was just looking at what we're increasing the water rate on a sixty thousand gallon user. Is that annual, is that month?
Those rates would be, yes, per month, so, and that's by the gallons. So, so five fifty-six, that would, yeah, per thousand gallon, I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, not per gallon, per thousand gallon. That would be from ten thousand and one up to sixty. So the other, the other rates prior to that apply first, then when you get to that section, then, then that rate applies to that grouping. Same thing as you continue on down.
It's tiered.
Yeah, and, and there's a slide in here, granted, it's, it's a little bit difficult to see on your screen there, but you, you'll have it in your hand out there, everybody in the audience should be able to see it all right. Do, do you want me to move, go ahead and move to that slide?
So how much, how much a year would, sixty, like a hotel, how much are they going to be looking at?
Without that, that sheet that I pulled off our system, I, I can't remember exactly what each, one of them were.
It includes the debt service.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
All these rates includes the debt service that would take into account.
Existing debt service plus new debt service for these two big projects on the water side and the sewer side. Yeah, so it's fully encompassing that, yes. So those are the rates for the inside city. Of course, we do have the rates and the impact to those that have water service outside of the city. Here again is one, one thing that would be provided to everybody. You can, you can get a glimpse there of exactly how many of the average customers are in there, the average usage, and what your water bill by month, by year would look like monthly, by whatever consumption category you're in.
So the three thousand one to four thousand, and then the four thousand one to five thousand is.
Yes, that's.
It's about eighty percent of your.
Excellent.
About, it's an eighty-twenty?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, I forgot about that little trick. Then the next slide, yeah, the highlighted area is where the.
That's where, that's where I was looking.
Is, is where the bulk of, of the population is and it's going to be impacted. And then that's a little bit of what I showed you through the budget, that's why that, that particular number was selected, so you could understand that. And again, fortunately, we were able to come in with less of an increase, spread it out a little bit more over time and still achieve the, the same numbers from a revenue perspective, that's what we were targeting. And this is the outside city. And then this just kind of, it gives you a little idea how much from the inside city limits that these rates would generate in twenty eighteen and then outside the city limits. So as we look, this, this is a, a very telling graph. You know, as we discussed in the budget cycle, that the water rates hadn't changed much. It had not been operating in the black. The two lines there, it shows that our revenue during twenty fourteen through even where we're at on twenty seventeen, the revenue does not even cover our overhead, let alone our capital expenditures. And I'll have some slides a little bit later that shows, but actually, the sewer side has actually been picking up the piece, but it's not sufficient to cover everything. So we have been eating into our cash reserves. Can I answer anything here? Basically, what we're projecting here is getting this, the water department sufficient to stand alone, service the debt, meet our capital needs and have a positive cash balance, operating cash balance beginning in twenty twenty-one and moving forward thereafter.
So the big jump in the blue on two thousand nineteen, so we're expecting most of that work to be done in nineteen.
Okay, so nineteen, keep in mind, like I said, we have debt service in those capital numbers. But the projects themselves is not in that number, it's just debt service.
Yeah, I remember you saying that, so what is that big jump?
Big jump in twenty nineteen is the replacement of automated meters.
Oh.
So it's, it's in a very expensive project.
Yeah. Didn't even remember that was in the plan.
Well, there's an offset on that with efficiencies, so.
There will be, yeah, and, and we'll eat up some of that, that'll be paid with cash, will be paid out of reserve. But through time, we'll begin to, to build that reserve back up, and we can look at that here in a little bit.
So the capital improvements, the three million dollars.
They're, they're not in these capital numbers.
Understood, when do we expect that work to be done, completed? Eighteen, nineteen?
No, I, I believe in nineteen, we should start, we're going to start on an eighteen threat. But I think actual, from a construction standpoint, it would, it'd be eighteen through nineteen, getting it completed.
The electricals start.
Much sooner.
In eighteen, won't it?
Yes.
Like as soon as they get the electrical design, it's going out to bid, right?
I mean, they're, they're starting design work now and I don't remember what the length was the time for him. I'd have to go back and look at the, the timeline, but it'll go out to bid before, before eighteen.
Yeah, one of the vendors on the automated meters, they quoted like sixteen thousand for twenty-four meters. That seems like a lot of money for a few.
For twenty-four meters?
Yes, special package.
Your automated meters run about three hundred and fifty dollars a piece for five eighths, three quarters residential meter.
But then you got to have the reading device, or you're talking just like a handheld scanner to drive?
Well, that doesn't, that's just the cost of a meter, it depends on what system you're, you're looking at. There are.
Two, yeah.
There are systems now that, that use cell towers, actually, that you really don't have to put anything in place. You just have to buy their software. So if, if you can get a cell signal at the meter, that's all you need.
The, the question that keeps nagging at me is, do we really need this big an increase now? Or could we take half of it now and half of it next year, so it's not quite such a hit? If we're, if we're not doing all these capital projects right away, it seems to me like maybe you could consider that. Was that considered as a possibility?
Well, that's how the plan was presented, is, is doing this, getting this in line. Because otherwise, these increases were necessary to get us in a positive cash balance for twenty eighteen, which we had not done, and I.
I see that there.
I can't tell you that. This includes the debt service that we'll start seeing, so we can build up the cash to be able to support that.
Is there any way to, you know, we're, we're taking out administrative salaries, seven fifty each year. It's going to go up eight hundred thousand and, you know, I know we've talked about.
It is less than that, but I, but it's still a large number.
That goes to shore general fund. Some of it is in some expenses, but, you know, if, if we're taking out more than we can account for, then that's driving our water rates up. You know, it's, and, and we're all facing a situation that we weren't involved with, but now we are. That when you look at the, the spread with property tax increased for a mill levy to help general fund, the impact is spread economically proportionally. When we look at, at trying to supplement general fund with water rates, now it becomes disproportionate because of everybody paying the same price. If I'm wa, working for minimum wage, then I, I just get a two percent increase annually. Then half of my money, my increase is going to go to a water sewer rate increase. That, you know, we're going to have to address how much money we take out so that we can operate water sewer, and then general fund needs to be addressed too. You know, I don't think we can keep depending upon taking the amount of money out of these two funds and keep it solid and, and, you know, I think that's what we're looking at because of taking the money out. We haven't had the money to do our upgrades, but, you know, we've got.
Well, that's because they didn't raise rates.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's all.
It's just, I mean, it's like the Fram oil filter commercial, you pay me now or pay me later, we're paying later. And it's not, it's unfortunate, but, I mean, because those expenses are there.
Yeah, you look at the bar graph.
So then the question, so then the question is, is do you put it on property tax or do you put it in, you know, a rate? So what's the fair tax, I guess?
Well, the other problem that we, we face now, you know, Leonard and I talked this, this morning, you know, this has been going on for probably thirty-plus years, this transfer. And it was me, probably, you know, I, I don't want to speak for other administrations well before me, but it was probably an effort to hold down property taxes.
Well, I don't know, I can't speak for either, but it's, the financial practice of doing this is obviously transferring money out to show the true cost of running that facility, because there are other costs that aren't charged there, i.e. just from the clerk's office, utility billing, the expense of the employees there, collecting the utility billing, supervision, my time, my, not Terry's time, but other supervisory things. So there's a rationale financially for transferring, it's not just to say, well, let's, let's keep property taxes down.
Right.
But that would be actually a skeptic tactic. You really want to show what, what the true cost of the, of the utility is. Because if, if they were a separate entity on their own, they'd have to pay for those things. They'd have to go out and contract for, for whatever, for the billing and overhead and so forth. So that's the financial rationale for doing it. And I actually looked at that when I first came here and talked about that. And we looked at the, the, the rationale or the, the way it is done here in Kansas, I should say, is they look at a percentage, what's appropriate based on a percentage. percentage, what's appropriate based on a percentage of your operating revenues or operating expenditures. And we looked at that and we had, we fluctuated anywhere between 12 over the last 10 years, Kelly can maybe remember directly, but we fluctuated up maybe highest 20% this year. These rates, as I recall, around 13%.
Be in between 12 and 13.
12 and 13%. And what we've heard from the, I don't know, was it the state?
Yeah, so in between 10 and 15 is customary. If you stay around that 15, that's a customary practice throughout communities in Kansas.
Right. So that's, that's made me, give me a better level of comfort, because I had the same question. I said, are we looking at that amount and can we justify that? And so that's how we, that's the rationale we use, is that percentage following that percentage based on the standard here. So, and we're, we're, like I say, we're between 12 and 13%, which is.
So then essentially that creates a gap between what it actually cost in water sewer and then what you're transferring out, Greg.
Why you mean a gap?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, there's the difference, because what Leonard's saying, there's expenses that shouldn't be in there that are being transferred to pay for, out of the general fund.
Just money?
Yeah, just money.
Yeah, money, yes.
And so that's the gap that I'm talking about.
Okay.
And so that gap is gonna be, I'm just guessing, 300,000, something like that. Me.
Well, and I have split them up equally in between the two departments.
You have, okay.
Yeah.
So, all right, so.
So you're seeing part of it on the sewer side, you're seeing part of it on the.
And that was my question. So part of it is water and part of it's sewer.
Absolutely, it's split right down the middle.
So it's, so it's split 50/50?
Yep. So there are five departments within the water sewer fund. And two of them are on the water side, two of them are on the sewer side, and then there's admin. The admin, everything that was specifically tied to one of the two departments was moved there, otherwise it was split equally for the purposes of analysis.
So then you'd have to fund the total difference if you just separated it out, which is what you had suggested. If you separated it out, then you have to make up that difference with property tax money.
That property taxes or?
And we've got the tax, and, yeah, well, we've, we've pretty much tied our hands with the sales tax. You know, the property taxes were limited with the tax lid, how much we can increase that. Is that coming into play now? And I mean, that's what we talked about, the difficulty, it's unfortunate that it, Craig's right, this is an appropriate thing if it was the wrong level back then or the wrong reasons back then. Question is, is how do you unwind that? And if you do unwind that, I don't know how you can without cutting services, cutting people.
And that's.
Or cutting other capital projects.
But cutting capital projects is a one-time thing.
That's right. Well, but cutting capital projects is one of the reasons we're here now, because there should have, there should have been some upgrades being made along for many years. And, I mean, we can talk about that forever, we're not gonna get anywhere. But, I mean, I mean, that's, I mean, I don't think we as a commission ought to set people, set it up to have that happen again. But that's essentially.
No, I think that's what we're looking at.
Yeah.
We've got to come up with a plan.
I think that's wrong.
And a rate that everybody can afford, and yet we still put the money in to take care of the system. We can't, we can't come up with a plan that perpetuates what's happened in the past. We've got to address it one way or another, but, you know, I think in looking at it, we've gotta look at the whole picture. We have to look at how much we take out, because that affects everybody. And as rates go up on the commercial aspect, we look at how much it affects a customer, but then commercially, they're gonna pass that back on to all of us too. So not only are we gonna be charged more for the water that we use, but when I go get a donut, my donut's gonna cost more, my biscuits and gravy are gonna cost more.
So you need to eat fruit.
My fruit's gonna cost more too.
I have to water the fruit.
Yeah. You know, so, but Fred is right, we can't keep going and not look that we're taking care of funds for our maintenance.
Sure.
We have to do that.
And we want, we want, we took time to really go through the CIP first and foremost and understand that piece of it. And that's why I was very specific, and you were very adamant as well. What is the true picture of what our capitals get in this with these rates? And so I think we can see there are needed improvements. We understand those things, and it also allows us to start building up some cash reserves where future projects, we're paying with cash out of what we're collecting as opposed to.
Instead of doing the.
Yes. And setting us up where we have a good maintenance plan going forward, so, you know, our grandchildren and great-grandchildren don't have to go through what we're going through today.
Yeah. Yeah, I see what Gary was talking with, do we have to do it all, one, you have this big impact, or is there advantage? We gotta know, we know where we gotta get to. And I think that's what I'm talking about with the money we take out. We know where we gotta go, but there's a lot of routes to get there. Maybe we need to start adjusting a lot of things to get to where we need to go. It's, it's so hard to hit it all at once.
But you gotta remember, I mean, it's not just an arbitrary transfer. I mean, there are true costs associated with the running of that fund and those utilities. It's not captured within the financials of that fund. And this was the process that was selected to identify those, target them and allocate those.
But if 100,000 isn't going to those actual expenses and we can leave 100,000 in this fund, we can bring our rates down because we've increased the revenue. If it's 50,000 that's not going, it's 50,000 that's contributing and staying in that fund that we don't have to raise our rates to compensate, so.
How are you gonna compensate for it outside of that, though?
Well.
Because then that now will come out of the general fund.
You're right. And there's ways of, we'd have to look at cutting back on spending.
Sure, I mean, you know, those are absolute options. And, you know, when we discussed that during the time of the budget, you know, I think what we walked away with when we did the budget is Craig and I, we're gonna sit down and talk about what is an appropriate level for us, so we can be consistent going forward and understand that and not just grab a number out of the air and say, let's do this much this year.
Yeah, and, you know, and that's kind of why we're here. We raised the rates 5% and what you're showing in the graph, 5% in those years wasn't enough.
No.
And we've gotta work with numbers. And, you know, I think that's the advantage of sitting down and having this discussion like this, that we can come to a conclusion and a direction that will be best for the city. We just can't, you know, we all gotta put in, and there's, there's always ways to trim back, even in, instead of your basin replacement to put a liner in or, you know, there, we can always look, instead of doing what we want, do what we have to do to get us a little farther down the road, but always working for improvements to address our maintenance issues. That's, that's why I'm bringing it out, that, you know, if there's ways we can look and say, okay, you're right, I can put 50,000 back in, and here's where 50,000 from these various programs, it's really not necessary, then we can save our water sewer rate.
And I wanna preface, we can, we can make any alterations to these rates. I mean, these are, these are proposals, this is what we've come back with. We can make those alterations, but the longer we hold out and continue to operate on a negative basis, is this more that the rates will have to be increased at a later point in time to offset that and bring those cash values back.
It just costs more long-term.
Yeah, I mean, we went through this with, in the budget, we brought, we've talked about these issues, and like you said, the original study said 170%. And we've got it down, down again to 100%. And that's based on looking at all the efficiencies we, efficiencies we could look at, as well as a level of capital improvement projects and capital improvement equipment to meet that. And the graph is very telling, I mean, it's, the expenses are there. One of the spreadsheets I always look at is called Revenue Required From Rates. That's where you put all your expenditures in there, capital items operating, you subtract out other income, and this says, here's the revenue you need to derive from those rates. That's what this is here. And our budget, again, when we went through the budget, that's what our 2018 budget is based on, these rates. So, again, as Mike said, certainly you can adjust the rates if you wanna say, instead of 100% this year, make it up 50%, 50%. I mean, we could certainly do that, but we will have to, very quickly, readjust 2018 budget in the general fund.
Well, what we could do, we raised the 5 mil, and I think it's put in the budget as commissioner discretionary projects.
For 2018, it was used for support for the capital projects that were presented in the general fund.
Okay, so, you know, we could designate part of that to supplement this, to do a step phase in our rate increase.
And that was capital, was, we were talking streets. I mean, what I would suggest, if you wanna do that, let us look at the, if you wanna reduce the rate from 100% to whatever, 75, 50, let us do that and come back and let us give you, make some recommendations on how we would adjust the budget, what we would cut from our standpoint, looking at the operations. And we could certainly do that if you wanna do that. Again, this is what we're recommending, obviously. It's painful, we talked about it, it's not something you like to do, but, and we're always trying to be, at least it's our goal, is to be as efficient as we can. We'll look at different ways to be, to be more efficient, no question about it. That's what our goal is, always to be efficient as possible in operations. But there's, I mean, this includes a capital budget, obviously, that was a short list of a very long list of really needs that, but, again, trying to be as prudent as possible. But that's one thing you can, you see that blue line there, capital is what we have been funding, and part of that in there, typically in a system, you need to invest 1% to 2% of your total value of your system, a system every year to maintain it properly. And we're not close to that.
Well, one thing I wanna commend staff for this rate study is, I don't know, what do we spend, $6, $8,000 with Lockner?
$11,860, I do believe, because the invoice is sitting on my desk. I'm paid right at the moment.
There's $11,800 that could go in to the fund, you know. Finally, after all the wait, and $11,000, staff did what we needed to do, or we should have been at this point a long time ago. You guys did an excellent job on putting this together for us, and, you know, it, it shows what going forward we can do with our staff. You guys are in touch with the systems, you know, the values and the money, it's just, the results isn't what any of us wanted to hear, but, you know, it's, now, if we can continue on this, we won't get in the situation that we've had to face.
You know, the, I've had a lot of people already come to me and they're very unhappy because we, you know, we'd already talked about raising the rates significantly. And generally, I said, can you please, you know, take a moment compared to what you pay for your cable bill and your electric bill and your cell phone bill? And it's really very, very low. And I think a lot of people see that, you know, that is a bargain. I mean, we can live with those other things, we can't live without water. Now, some of them did call me four-letter words, you know, but, but, I mean, you know, the fact is, it's a very reasonable bill. We compared it to other cities, as I remember last time we looked, and we're much cheaper than many surrounding cities.
We're substantially, where we're at today, we're substantially below everybody. This would bring us pretty well into line, a little bit higher than a couple, but I think those cities had indicated, they had rate increases coming, but we were still lower than, than some of the other ones, even with these increases that we're describing today.
Yeah, and regardless of what anybody else is paying, we have to make improvements to our facility.
Yeah, I mean.
We can't be, we can't, city can't exist without water.
We're one day away from not having water.
Right, exactly.
Just one bad day away.
We're men at any time.
Yeah.
That distribution panel can go out, and we are out of water, it's that close. You know, if, if we, if you can go back and look to see if we can, I know where we gotta get.
Sure. And I wanted to, and I just ask you to reserve opinion for just a moment and allow us to get through the sewer side of things, and then look collectively at everything as a whole. And then you direct us to do whatever you would like for us to do.
Yeah. So maybe we should have done the sewer first, so we could clean up with the water.
There you go, there you go.
It's gonna hit the fan or your.
I'll let Terry explain to you today how this functions.
Deliver bad news first and then the good news.
Yeah, I guess I did that backwards. But, so, do you have any more questions about this piece of it here? Okay. The next slide just shows how that, that water revenue distribution, how that all comes into play. On the sewer side, we've got, basically, we have the inside city that's proposed, and then we have the sewer district number two, that's our other sewer customer. 16% increase, 16 and a half percent increase in 2018, then 3% thereafter, so you can see what those rates look like. Again, this is based on, it's not consumption, it's contribution, correct, Terry? I've been consuming sewage. I got corrected on this one as well. So here's what your average bill at that level, appropriate level, would be at through the years. Again, this is the total monthly revenue. We were able to fit this all in one slide, just because the sewer district's the only one that doesn't apply to the inside city rates. So when we look at this, here's the revenue distribution. And here's the performance, again, with your overhead, that includes personnel, contractual commodities, any expenditures outside of capital, capitals broke out separately. It has been, it has operated mostly at a positive balance, but those positive balances have been eaten up by the water, water side of things.
So Terry's been able to keep his head above water?
He, no, it's below water, but it's above the sewer.
Above the poop.
But, I mean, a fact, though, would be, if we didn't have a decent cash balance in there to begin with, we would not even have been able to be where we're at now.
No, we would completely eliminated all cash resources that we have.
We've had our head in the sewer, I mean.
Yeah, that's, yeah. But, I mean, so this illustrates that, and I'll hit this next slide.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I got a little crazy here. This is everything collectively as revenue for the water sewer department, each different income type there and that distribution. But here's what the two of them look like. Looking at 2014 there, you can see we're not sufficient, and that's combining the revenue of both departments. We're still not covering that. We just barely covered in 18. Of course, as we discussed, we're not gonna hit it in 19, we're gonna eat up some of those cash reserves, but that was intentional, we knew it was gonna be there and like that. But that's the nice thing about having those cash reserves, we can do those projects that are very expensive without borrowing cash on everything. And then going out to 2021 and 22, we build up, again, start building up some small cash reserves that are going to offset what we're not going to have in 2019. So we don't have a huge bulge there as it really looks like we were going to. So make it past 2019, we're. We're operating both, the water side won't hit a positive cash balance until 2020, but collectively, both of those departments will operate in a positive balance in 2020. And actually, with these rates that we, we are proposing, we will have a very small positive balance in 2018. And actually, with these rates that we, we are proposing, we will have a very small positive balance in twenty eighteen. Around thirty thousand dollars.
That chart for the sewer looks a lot better than the chart for the water.
It, it did.
Yeah, I mean, wow, what a difference.
What questions, comments?
I think I've made enough probably.
Well, it's not, it's not a comfortable position.
No, it's not, it, it's not comfortable for you, it's not comfortable for us, and it's certainly not comfortable for our citizens.
If we don't do something now, it's going to cost us much more later. And, well, like you, Gary, I've had some folks say some things to me too, and I candidly tell them, you know, we've got some issues that we have to address.
We, Terry and I and Craig, I mean, we, that, that's what took long on this. I mean, there was, there was disruptions and of course, we had to get into budget. Um, but we, we went through a lot of different options looking at, at this to come back with the best solution that we felt like was. It's, it's still painful, but, uh, a lot of thought was put into this, the impact that it's going to have to our citizens.
So are we ready to, uh, direct staff to prepare an ordinance, or do we want to chew on this a while and talk about it again?
If they could look at it like, like Craig said, and maybe come back with a, another option, maybe you can't, maybe there's no way, but.
There's always an option.
There's always a way, it's just something's going to have to be cut. It'll cost more, if we do that, it'll just cost more.
The rates over time, I'm going to have to increase.
I mean, it'll cost more long-term. And if we're really concerned about spending money and expenses, the pain now is not going to be as great as the pain will be later, is an old saying, and so.
Well, what I was thinking, if we could get some revenue from saving somewhere else, just to come in, to soften, you know, we got to get where we're going. But if we can supplement some of the money we're taking out, back into it, and, and keep the plan going in the right direction, just so that we don't have to do a hundred percent the first year. You know, if we could lower that and then move up.
So the question then turns out, what services do we not want to offer?
I think that's what staff could look at and.
Well, and, and we'd need direction more than just, I mean, we could come back with ninety percent, you know, or we can come back, if you really want to spread it over two years kind of equally, tell us now, we'll do, we'll, we'll come back with a fifty-fifty plan. Probably won't be pretty, but we'll come back with a plan. Because it, it's not going to, we're not going to.
Well, I, 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 I mean, I won't support that, because I just think that's a wrong decision to do long-term. I mean, there's, uh, there's other things, I understand, and, and the water issue got there over a long period of time, and we're going to have to try to fix it over a long period of time. But I don't, I, I just think that that's just, that's just delaying the inevitable as far as spending. And we're always talking about, well, we got to be more efficient, we got to watch what we spend. If we don't do that, then we're just going to spend more later that allow, it doesn't make it easier to catch up with the other things that we know we're already behind. And when I've explained it to people and said, you know, I've used the term, the pain's now, it's not going to be as great as the pain is later. I think folks as a whole, while they won't be happy and don't blame them, because I, I'm not happy about it. I wish we weren't in this situation, I wish we didn't have to make this decision. But at some point, a commit, either this commission or another commission is going to have to make the very hard decision. And we won't know about it for a year or two, but at some point, they'll say, boy, that, I'm glad somebody did that. And so that's, that's why we get paid the big bucks, which means our check in the mail.
It's in the mail.
So, um, but, uh.
Yeah, I know, we all definitely want to do what's best for the city. Long-term and short-term. I mean, it's not real clear on how big a hit some people can take in town, so.
And I agree with that.
And we're looking a hundred and sixty-four dollars a year. If you're making nine thirty-five and you got a two percent raise, that's three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So, you know, it's a significant hit on that increase, plus then everything we buy is going to be increased too. I know we got to get it in, in the black, we got to get it working. But, you know, I guess, I think there's areas in our budget that we can take from the seven hundred and fifty administrative salary, that we can adjust some things to soften that, to put the revenue there.
Number one, it's about a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand less than that approximately. But, I mean, again, it's still a large number, but those are real expenses involved in that.
Cut a hundred thousand at least, or six, three hundred thousand.
You cut a hundred thousand, you're going to cut a hundred thousand somewhere. I mean, if a hundred thousand's not coming in, you know, that's, that's two meals.
Economically smart, because that means you're cutting people. They don't pay taxes, they don't have money to spend. I just think that's a revolving cycle that is just, it doesn't make economic sense, especially for the people that are going to be affected by it. And there's all kinds of research that says those things don't work, state Kansas is a perfect example. And, uh, I, I just, it's awful easy for us to sit here and say, well, we're going to cut your job, and we're going to cut your job, and we're going to cut your, and we're going to cut your job. And that doesn't help these rates, it doesn't help those people.
Yeah, no, but there, there's areas that we're spending that can be cut, without cutting a job or cut a service.
Well, it's easy for you to say. And where is it at? I mean, we hit the budget.
I mean, we've sat here and talked and talked and talked, and when we went through the budget process, we were pretty thorough, even though it was short. And we had our one afternoon where we just met over it. And now all of a, and we actually had agreed to go with this, and now all of a sudden.
Well, we hadn't agreed to go to this because we just got this, we agreed to a number that was there.
We agreed to a hundred and twenty-five percent increase, when we did the budget.
We made that clear when we were talking about the budget.
And so that now it's nitty-gritty time, and we got to make a decision, and all of a sudden, we don't, I mean, it's.
This is out here to discuss, isn't it? I thought we could enter into discussions.
Make a decision.
Yeah, there's.
Because what was, I read something about December.
We, we need some rate increase structure to support our twenty eighteen budget, beginning in December so that those revenues will be available in January.
Yeah, and, and I'm just basing, Craig said that there was ways to go back and look, and he could do it. That's all I was responding on.
And that's true, I mean, we certainly can.
So, so then, you know, if they say they can, then what can they do? Bring it back and tell us, if they can't, tell us they could.
It'd be nice to have two options, to do the full increase now or the increase over two years, just see how they compare.
Right, that's all, you know, to take it as, as first glance, and then when, when, when I hear, yeah, we can, then what are those options? You know, I mean, we asked for the, the rate study over a year ago, and we just now get it. Lochner sat here for three or four months before it was presented, we found out it was garbage. So, you know, yeah, we need to make a decision, but hey, get us the information and give us time to look at it. We've just been presented to it.
We know we're going to have to make a significant increase, good, bad or ugly. Would you agree with that?
We've got to make a decision, yeah.
Okay, we've also know that if we don't, I mean, you said we could lose our, uh, water plant at any time. I think if you went and asked a hundred people on the street, they'd say, do, fix the water plant.
And that's being done.
But at a deficit still until we do something about it. Alls you're doing is just creating a deficit longer.
Then, you said you could look at it and bring back options, isn't that what?
Exactly, in theory, again, we can, you tell us to cut out a million dollars, we can come back with a cut of a million dollars. I mean, in theory, we could do that. Again, it won't be pretty. Uh, if you tell us to cut a, 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 you know, in half to a fifty percent increase, I'm sure with the dollar, total dollar revenue, that would, would have to be cut, but it would be significant. And where we take that from, uh, either operating and, and or capital together in the water and sewer funds right away, immediately, and whether you look at that transfer, then if you look at that transfer, then you look in the general fund. Where are we going to make up the difference in the general fund, whether it's a hundred thousand or a fifty thousand? Uh, and what that means, and then we would look at that. And so that's why I'm saying, all I was saying is, if you want to do that, give us the opportunity to look at that and make those kind of, from our standpoint, what priorities we see in the departments, what would be the best to, how to structure the budget if it was a fifty-fifty or a seventy-five, twenty-five for the next two years.
And that's all I said.
And we can do that, uh, but again, we built our budget, and we spent three and a half hours going through the budget. We built that budget in the water and sewer fund based on, uh, at the time, you know, we didn't have the rate structure before you, but we had, uh, a very good estimate, and we've actually gotten lower than that. Uh, and so that's why we're, you know, we're bringing that, we took, there's a lot of variables when you put a rate structure together, variables in expenditures, operating capital, uh, and you, you try it, and that's what we looked at, all the variables we could, uh, and the best combination of expenditures, and to get to where we need to be on the capital side especially, because that's where we haven't been funding, uh, capital. You can see some of them are, are very low, um, that's where we need to get back to. But again, if your direction is to come back with those options, we can, we'll do that. Uh, but, and we'll show you the impacts.
About fifty, if you go fifty percent, it's about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar revenue impact, so.
So that's still just barely covering our overhead. Um. According to this chart.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand, well, no, if, if you take seven fifty eight, you're not going to cover it, you're going to be in a hole.
I mean, yeah, we're, we're still not covering.
I mean, you're covering right now.
Are you looking at both water and sewer together?
No, just water.
Or just water? Yeah, see, we're, even in twenty eighteen, we're still under, underwater, no pun intended.
Yeah, you don't get to, you don't get to a positive balance until twenty twenty-one.
I said just, I said even if we did a fifty percent increase, we still would just almost be covering our overhead.
Oh, right, the, the orange color.
Yeah, that's on the water sewer side collectively, yeah.
I mean, that's the first thing we'd look at, uh, you look at big ticket items, if it's a significant, if it's seven hundred thousand dollars, you'd look at capital. What do we, and capital, utility fund makes up over half of the capital budget total, from all departments. They're over half, I think it's one point eight million, so we could look at that, um.
So if we did fifty percent this year, fifty percent next year, then the next year would have to be.
Going to be probably another fifty percent.
Fifty percent, then a year after that, it'd be maybe twenty-five.
Yeah, we'll start pulling it down.
So would it be safe to say that if you did that, that cost people more money long-term?
It's very likely in time it would.
If you bite the bullet, make the decision now.
It, it's likely that that's what the scenario would show.
There's one point I want to make real quick, uh, in talking about these capital projects and the loans from KDHE. Uh, KDHE requires when, before they give us these loans, we have to give them our financials. And if we're not able, if our rates are not sufficient to meet our operating costs, they will decline giving us the loans.
Wow, I forgot about that.
So, you need to keep that in mind on this too, as part of the.
Yeah, we have to be doing our, our part to.
We have to be doing our part or they're not going to give us money.
The water system is standing alone, financially viable.
So, need to keep that in mind.
So, and we need that for next year, basically, to get these loans.
I believe so, that if, if we cut this down to where we're not meeting our overhead, that they're going to look at it and say, no, you, you're not doing what you need to do, so we're not going to give you the loan. And that, that puts the whole program, the electrical and all on hold.
That's it all at risk.
Well, you wouldn't be able to make the upgrades, we didn't get the loan, there wasn't any money.
We can discuss this all night, I think, I think we need to.
Well.
Move forward.
The motion we were, if we were to make a motion, it's to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for consideration at the next meeting. Is there any reason not to go ahead and do that? Doesn't mean we have to prove it.
I'd go ahead, let the motion to, you know, what you're saying.
Okay.
So your motion would be one.
I move that we direct staff to prepare an ordinance for consideration at the next commission meeting, implementing the recommended water sewer rate increases.
Certainly.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the discussion. Okay, so the motion is, is that we approve the rate as presented in this.
No, not exactly. We direct staff to prepare an ordinance for us to consider at the next meeting. That, if we approve the ordinance at the next meeting, then we would be approving these new rates. Correct, correct.
Exactly. Motion in seconded.
No, it's been moved and seconded, and so on. I'm trying to understand the motion. So, prepare an ordinance.
For us to.
Consider.
Consider at the next meeting, have it ready at the next meeting.
The ordinance will have those rates in.
These, these rates in it.
Yeah, exactly.
If we do that, and then in two weeks, we say we're not going to do it, that puts us two weeks behind.
Right.
So I'm assuming that means that in two weeks, when you prepare the ordinance, that will, two of us will vote yes for.
Possible.
Or two could vote against it.
Or two could vote against, that's true, I, I agree with that.
But we don't have the ordinance to vote on tonight, so that's all we can do tonight is to direct them to have the ordinance ready for next time.
Okay, all right, so it's been moved and seconded, then, um, that we have the ordinance prepared for the rate, as, the rates study as presented, correct? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll say aye. Okay. All right.